Good evening. We welcome you here to this, our regular session of the West Valley City Council. We'll call our meeting to order. We note that we have six members of the seven-member council here. Councilwoman Karen Lang is excused tonight. We will begin our meeting by having an opening ceremony where Councilman Tom Hume is in charge of that.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that very much. Here, I would like to invite all of you stand up with me and do the led- legend. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now go to... We actually do have someone that appears, or at least one, from a scout troop. We like to recognize those who come and would invite that young man to come forward telling us which troop he's in, which school he attends, and why he's here. Is he working on a merit badge? And if so, which one? Is that all right, if you come forward and tell us that? Okay. Just come right up here to the microphone. We appreciate you being here.
My name's Daniel Cox. I'm from Troop 239, and I go to 500. I'm Kennedy Junior High.
Kennedy Junior High. And you're working on a merit badge or something tonight? Which one? Citizenship in the...
I'm Karen.
Community, probably? Okay. Most likely. Thank you very much. Welcome. And I hope you enjoy the chance to see how the city council works tonight. I believe there were no other scout groups. The rest, I believe, are here for some special recognition we'll have in just a moment. Next, we go to our minutes of August 12th for a regular council meeting to the council for action.
Mayor, move for approval of the minutes of August 12th, 2014, regular meeting.
Councilman Vincent has made the motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Buehler has seconded that motion. Any discussion to the motion, to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll place the vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of August 12th, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we go to awards ceremonies and proclamations section of our agenda. We have tonight an Employee of the Month recognition. And we are turning to Councilman Hume to make that recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. Jake is over there. He suggests me to do it Vietnamese, but I can't like... I don't want a mayor, and my friends sitting by me right here stipulate, feel kind of left out, so I can do it in this.
Remember, you can make a few comments in Vietnamese if you want, in addition to that.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that, Mayor. Tom, why don't you stand up, and I will read this to you, or you can... I'm reading this standing. Thank you. I would like to nominate CD Sub Mechanic, Tom Dune, for the Employee of the Month award. I can certainly see Tom going above and beyond his duties in helping us police officers with maintenance and repair of our vehicles. The latest incident happened last Friday. An officer and I were on a dispatch, a call, where we all ran over a hazard on the road that caused damage to tires on our vehicles. We both quickly went to the CD Subs to change out our respective tires that were rapidly deflating. While we were evaluating our tires, it was approximately 7:00 PM. Near the compressor, one of the shop garage doors opened. It was Tom. He asked us what was going on, and once he was informed, he quickly located the nails that were in our tires. He acted quickly and repaired our tire in less than 30 minutes. Due to Tom's skills and resources, we were back on the road and working far quicker than if we would have had to change our tires ourselves. I'm sure our supervisors are duty appreciate that. And what makes this even better, Tom didn't stress, he didn't act put out. He simply got done with initiation and a genuine enthusiasm to help us. I have heard numerous compliments about Tom. For many of the officers in West Valley, I believe he is unanimously liked by everyone that he helps because he does more than willingly and with a smile. Tom performs his duties well, as do all of the employees at the shops. What makes Tom is great is how he does his job with that attitude. Nominated by Garage Dan. You can come up here and shake their hand, and then we have something for you right there. Well, you have a couple of minutes. You want to say something? Because we can see the two rows there as your family members and so on. You want to say something?
Just come up to the microphone.
I would like to say thank you for everybody to love me and vote for me for Employee of the Month. And I say like, I love everybody too. That's why I put very hard work to make the more for West Valley City. Yeah, make for all the car for officers who serve the on the road. Yeah, I keep continue doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
Thank you so much.
Next, it is my opportunity to recognize the service of some individuals who have served our city well in a very interesting capacity. And these are individuals who have worked on our Professional Standards Review Board. That's the board that reviews many of the activities of the police department, especially where there are questions as to appropriateness in the use of force, vehicular pursuits, and internal affairs investigations. And so, we have three individuals who have served there, and they have come to the end of their service. But we do appreciate what they have done, and so we will now recognize them. And we do have here a plaque that we would like to give to you in recognition of that service. First, we mentioned Dean Trump. He has been a member of that committee and served as chair. His tenure on the committee has spanned a significant number of years. 1992, December of 1992, until June of this year. And having known Dean over the years, very much appreciate his service. He often commented on his work there and have appreciated his willingness to give and his background that certainly added to that. As well, Janetta Williams, who has served on that almost as long, September of 1993 to July of this year, and has given long and distinguished service there. Then as well, although not as many years, certainly a significant number, Amalia Monberg, who served from December of 2002 to June of this year. We function as a city, certainly with employees and with the council. But a lot of the effective work is done by those who volunteer their time to serve on boards and commissions. And those who have done it over a period of years have made a significant difference in the operations of our city and in service to the residents of our community. It is very important that we have people willing to do that. And our appreciation, although it is simply a token, our appreciation runs deep and certainly for the service rendered. Thank you. We appreciate your work. What we will do, probably, I don't know if there are members of the council that also want to make comments. Otherwise, we will just have each of you come up, and we will hand you your award here. I guess it's not technically a award. What's the word I'm looking for? Recognition? Most of those words don't seem to fit. It's not enough. I'm looking for something. You know, I wouldn't want to use super caliphagicalistic expellidocious or something like that, but it really needs to be something great to recognize the service. And so, with that then, we'll invite you to come up. Dean first, and Janetta and Amalia. If you would come up, and certainly we would invite you to shake the hands of each of our council members and city manager. Dean, I won't make you carry this. I'll hand it to you, Mr. Meno Penny. That's what it is. Who would you finish? Dean? Dean, if you would wait up here. Oh! Janetta, if you would come up. And then if you'll just stand there. Thank you so much for your service. You do a lot in the community. Now that you have that... Dean, here. Now that you have a hand free.
Can I have a few tweets, please?
Sure.
The chief, I'll send these to the chief, and you can send them on.
Mr. Mayor, may I just take a minute and say a few words?
Yes, we will recognize you.
I appreciate that. It was a little hard for me to make any comments back there because I could barely sit above the chair, so... I just wanted to extend a level of appreciation from the police department. We've had many, many long years together. Some months have been much more challenging than others. And these three members have been very, very dedicated to their volunteer assignment. Some months, they spent hours and hours and hours reviewing cases. And not only reviewing cases, but also participating in some of our trainings within the police department to gain a full knowledge and understanding as to what we do in this line of work of being a police officer. And their input has been very valuable, and they've been a wonderful asset to the city. But they've also been a phenomenal resource to the police department, and we want you to know that we appreciate everything you've done, and we are going to miss you. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Dean? Yes, Mr. Trump, if you would come forward to the microphone, and we'd welcome each of you if you'd like to make a couple of comments.
I'd feel bad if I got home and didn't say something. It has really been a great experience for me. I think I've written with at least 80 officers. I've also written with some of them 15, 20 times. And it's been a real experience to be out on the road and see what police officers really do, because I'm convinced that 99% of people have no idea. The last thing, a comment I want to make is the fact that we've had some bad publicity. But I do believe that we have some of the most wonderful, honorable police officers, both men and women, that I've been a pleasure to know. And it's really been a pleasure to be with them, to know them, to review them, and in some cases, to vote to fire them. But it has been a great experience, and it's been my pleasure to work with all these folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Ms. Williams?
Thank you so much. Thank you for the recognition as well. And yes, we've given a lot of years to West Valley City, and we would hope that West Valley is much better people and place than when we first started. Some of you probably know all of the things that were happening way back in 1992 and 93. And so, I think that we've made a big difference being here and being on the review board. And also, when the group Nicole in ACOL came in last year, and I had the honor of working with Dean and compiling information. And they were so surprised and so honored that we had such good information that we're doing such a good job. So again, thank you so much, and it's been an honor to serve West Valley City. And I will be around.
I didn't have anything planned. I really didn't think I was going to say anything. But it was a great journey through all these years to serve with the police department. When I first joined, I didn't think that it was going to be as fulfilled as it was to me. I have a different view for the police department. I mean, these guys, these men and women do their best, and they would do anything for us citizens. And it's great to be here in West Valley. And thank you, all of you, for giving us the opportunity. And hopefully, we'll see you guys again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Next, we go, we would invite Mr. Todd Foselli. I think, is that correct pronunciation?
Foselli.
Foselli. Who's the publisher of the Utah Family Magazine and website that has your presentation tonight.
Yes, we're the local parenting publication for the Salt Lake area. We do many things. We've known those for our No More Kids calendar. We gather a lot of resource guides to help parents connect to activities and things going on in the community. Each year, we put together a voting format. We call it our Family Favorites. And we ballot all of our readers in 50 different categories. And they get to say who's doing a great job for those readers, for the public in general. We have a special award that we do for the organization that receives the most votes across all categories. And this year, the West Valley City Families Fitness Center did have outstanding results. They won the category of Favorite... Favorite Recreation Center. They won the category of Favorite After School Program. And they didn't stop there. They also had a second place in Favorite Day Camp, a second place in the Favorite Climbing Facility, second place in Favorite Party Location for ages 0 to 6, and third place in Favorite Women's Fitness. So, across all categories, in many categories. And they had some votes even in other categories than these. These were the placings. So, it's very commendable. I've been in the facility. It's a great facility. The staff is wonderful. So, they do your city very proud. So, I have an award that goes over some of those categories, but also just a plaque. This is our little smileys, Family Smiley's logo. You'll try to get this around town, so you should start seeing this around. So, when you look and see this logo, what it means is that it's recognized by... The organization is recognized by families as somebody who treats families well. And there's some copies of the issue. There are still some copies of this issue in the lobby, if anybody wants some, as you leave.
Actually, if we could invite, is Nancy Day up? And if you would come up, and perhaps, because this recognition really recognizes you and your efforts there, maybe you could represent the city and accept it on our behalf, and then come up here, and we'll take some pictures. And so, Mr. Foselli, we'd like to greet you as well.
Can I run a quote from the center of the mayor? Can I put Nancy in the award, ever in the middle?
The only reason you put the mayor of the center is because then you get voted out. That's the only reason. Freeze? Thank you very much. We appreciate the recognition, which certainly stems ultimately from those citizens who participate there at the Families Fitness Center. And I appreciate the work of Miss Day and her staff and all that you do. Thank you. Well, now we've done all the recognitions, almost everybody's gone. But next, we have a comment period. And we did have someone sign up to speak. And so, we would invite Thomas Jackson to come forward. And you have, if you need it, up to five minutes.
Yeah, we'll take that one. Thomas Jackson, I live in West Valley. I've been a citizen for 26 years. I'm a retired music teacher. I taught at Evergreen Junior High and retired at Westlake Junior High. So, I've known the community well. I'm a cyclist. I've done enough miles since I've been in West Valley to ride around the earth over probably close to one and a half times. I was cycling today. I chose Mill Creek Canyon. I didn't choose West Valley. I chose Mill Creek Canyon. It's very challenging. My comment is, in a recent announcement with Mayor Dolan and Tom McAdams, well, I'm also on the Salt Lake County Bicycle Advisory Committee. So, I represent our area with the cycling community. My question is, with the recent announcement is, I was... We announced, we had $800,000 from the county to provide bicycling lanes to separate cities. And Sandy took a chunk, South Jordan did, Blovedale. Several cities around the Wasatch Front are planning now 87 new miles of bike lanes. Why did West Valley turn down the money? That part of the money that was told to me by George DeNeres? He's active transportation at the Salt Lake City County. Why doesn't West Valley want cycling?
Does that conclude your comments?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, and we won't forget your question. But I think that was all that were here from the public to comment during our comment period. Okay. So then, we're done with that. And so, now we will go to our city manager for comments.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have any comments tonight. I will mention in reply to Mr. Jackson's comments. I'll check into it. I don't know why or what the stipulations or the cycling money was all about process-wise, so I will check into that.
Okay. I think I would add to that some comments, since I worked with the county on some of those and have heard discussions on those and reviewed those reports. Those are done by, cities must submit applications which may or may not be approved for money. And so, as far as turning down money, I don't think that's part of the process. West Valley City may have opted not to request or submit an application. But no money is dispersed unless a request is submitted. That's submitted, there's a committee. And they review that, evaluate it, and that cycling is one of the categories. There's money, and we requested in other areas. And so, there may be issues there, but it would be interesting to get feedback on that.
I'll find out.
It's not quite as simple as it sounds. And who's saying that? It's a little misleading, because they don't offer the money. They put it out there, and they say anyone who wants to submit a proposal that meets the criteria, and then as far as the money goes, that money will be distributed. And of course, we would love to be the recipients of all sorts of funding, and those aren't the only categories. We did get funding in other categories. So, it will be interesting to get some feedback on that and hear a future report.
UTA also has money to...
Yeah, it's actually not a debate, and our rules prevent someone from speaking twice on the same issue. Apologize, but, and it's nothing against you. The rule was set up to prevent a debate occurring or people just jumping in. But if you would make sure, I remember seeing some information from you on it. But if you would make sure, if you want, we have your name here and a phone number, and we can contact you with some... and we can contact you with some further information, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you. And thank you for being understanding about not being able to speak yet. That protects us for the times when it's not so quiet and easy like this. All right. Thank you. Counsel, any further comments? Okay. Then on to resolutions, resolution 14-144. This is the execution and delivery of a master lease agreement. And this is the one in conjunction, I believe, with the radios. And we purchased those and put them on a lease over a period of time, approximately $300,000 worth and for public safety radios and equipment for both the police and fire department. And we negotiated a lease. The rate is 2.33% over a seven-year period. So I think that's all the pertinent information. Anything then to the council? And by the way, we have discussed these issues in a prior city council meeting. We take our final action here on these issues, but we've had previous discussion on them actually. So just so you're aware, if we don't say very much, it's because we've already talked about them. And this gives a chance, if there's anyone to weigh in on or if anything comes up in the ensuing time, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 14-144.
We have a motion from Councilman Vincent for approval of this resolution. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Councilman Buehler has seconded the motion. It is now before us for approval and a discussion. Seeing no discussion, we will place it for a vote. All those in favor of resolution 14-144, master lease agreement for public safety radios and equipment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. We go into resolution 14-145. This is actually related to our previous one there. In addition to executing a lease, we first actually have to purchase these items. This is for purchasing the equipment from UCS Wireless in Sandy, the communications equipment under state purchasing contract. And so we need to approve this as well. This is also an item we discussed previously. To the council then for action or comment.
Mayor?
Councilman Rush.
I would move for approval of resolution 14-145 authorizing to purchase the radio communications equipment.
We have the motion before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Hune. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 14-145 to purchase the mobile radios and other equipment to be used for the police and fire departments, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. We have one more resolution. That's 14-146. And this is for the transfer of some property to Riverside Mobile Home Community and two grants of temporary construction easement. These are follow-through on some we have done previously, as you recall, along the Jordan River for flood control mitigation, to put these gates in so that floodwaters do not back up into the mobile home area when there is flooding in the river. And then the construction easement to go in there and actually install them. And once they're installed, transferred by a quick claim deed to the community there. So with that introduction, to the council for comments or actions.
A motion to approve resolution 14-146.
Councilman Hune makes the motion to approve this resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Nordfeldt has seconded the motion. It is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 14-146 to transfer some property and to temporary construction easements, 1232 West Rock River Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. We have now completed our resolutions. I believe there, I am not aware of a need for an executive session. There is not any further comments from the council? Seeing none, our business is concluded. We need one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion pass unanimously. Counsel is adjourned.